All right, good morning. Good morning, it is August eighth, two thousand twenty-three at nine AM. I would now like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge allegiance. Father God, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for allowing us to come together again. But we, we, we offer up our gratitude for all that you have blessed us with. Let us you please continue to watch over us, protect us, keep us safe from any incoming storms that may try to come our way this summer. And Lord, continue to grow our community and help us to be better than we were the day before. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on to item three, motion. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one two zero zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all amendments and pending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second, Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Childs.
Aye.
And I will say aye as well. Normally, I do not have to vote, but today I will vote to ensure that we have a quorum, because we only have four people at this time. Okay, on to item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whatever item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, once again, as the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify a city staff prior to the start of the meeting. I have one name on my list at this time, Mr. Robert Wimberly. Please come forward, name and address in three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Well, Robert Wimberly, twelve way Red Hood Drive, Orange, Texas. Today marks the fourth city council meeting that I've asked in person all of the city council members to look into an injustice that has occurred to Ruby Wimberly's City of Orange Water Department. Mistakes happen. Just to be clear, mistake is an action or judgment that is misguided or wrong. Our person handles a mistake is what helps determine the character of that individual. Just to be clear again, character is the mental and moral qualities distinctive to an individual. A mistake was made, and an elderly citizen is looking for the help from the elected officials to fix two exorbitant drafts taken from her bank account by the City of Orange Water Department. No matter who made the mistake, the City of Orange is wrong in penalizing a citizen by drafting out of her bank account funds for water they know she didn't use. It may have just been another mistake, but it really isn't necessary for the city manager to scintillate at Ruby Wimberly that states, please note that your account is currently paid and pooled, so the months in question have been paid. Especially when I have, on behalf of Ruby Wimberly, explained in three previous city council meetings and numerous emails, as well as verbally and multiple phone calls, that the City of Orange Water Department drafted out of her bank account one thousand seventy-seven dollars and fifty-three cents for one month, four hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-eight cents the next month. So, everyone within the sound of my voice, I challenge you tonight, before you go to bed, or tomorrow morning when you wake up, and you have a moment to look in the mirror, ask yourself, do you like what you see in the reflection? Does that person you see in the mirror have the character, which is the mental and moral qualities distinctive to the individuals in the mirror? Does the person you're staring at in the mirror fairly represent each of the citizens of Orange, Texas, to the office they were elected to? Also, at the last city council meeting, I ask as a common courtesy, if each of the elected officials here pleased to reply to this request made on behalf of an elderly citizen who has been a lifelong resident of Orange, Texas, only one out of seven was courteous enough to reply. Possibly, after spending some quality time in front of the mirror, maybe all the, all of the elected officials that make up the members of the Orange City Council could reply this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wimberly. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, if not, we will move on to item five, city announcements from staff. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor, just a reminder, next week, Tuesday, August fifteenth, at five thirty, there will be a public workshop during the council checkup.
Say it one more time, what is today?
Tuesday, August fifteenth.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? Is it, Mr. Coombs?
Yes.
Okay, if not, we move on to proclamation. National Health Center Week, Health Awareness Month, and Tan Healthcare Day. So proclamation from Office of the Mayor, whereas the week of August sixth through twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, is nationally recognized as National Health Center Week, and whereas across the country, community health centers are recognized as a critical part of the universal healthcare system, and whereas throughout Texas, there are seventy-two health centers, and your locally federally qualified health center, Tan Healthcare is one of them. Tan Healthcare is designed specifically to ensure low and no income individuals and families have access to an accredited patient medical home. And whereas Tan Healthcare is celebrating their seventh year anniversary as a community health center in southeast Texas, since Tan Healthcare opened their doors in the City of Orange, they have served over six thousand five hundred and nine patients and their families annually. And whereas during the most trying times the City of Orange has faced, such as hurricanes, ice storms, and now the pandemic, they have rose to the occasion with extended hours for care, outreach screening for COVID- nineteen, and ensuring patients do not go without critical medications. And whereas Tan Healthcare's compassionate care continues as they offer the families the services that they need, including primary care services, behavioral and emotional healthcare, medication assistance, pediatric services, and transportation services, it is their belief that all people deserve all care. Now therefore, I, Larry Spears Jr., Mayor of the City of Orange, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of August sixth through twelfth, two thousand twenty-three as National Health Center Week, August as Health Awareness Month, and Tuesday, August eighth, as Tan Healthcare Day in the City of Orange, and ask all citizens to join me in encouraging women, men, and children to raise awareness, become informed, and get regular checkups. Congratulations.
So on behalf of Tan Healthcare, my name is Ms. Eka Go. Thank you for allowing me to have a few moments just to make a few statements. So, as everyone stated, or as our mayor stated, it is National Health Center Week. National Health Center Week is an ability to bring enlightening education to our communities about what is healthcare in our communities, and what can we do as a community health center to help bring healthcare to everyone. So currently, in the state of Texas, there are seventy-three other federally qualified healthcare centers. And in our health centers specifically here in Orange, we are in the Northway Shopping Center. We started out at thirty-seven twenty-seven. Last year, we outgrew that space, and we moved to thirty-seven twenty-seven. We also incorporated several other aspects of healthcare in our system. We have a pediatric wing, we have a behavioral health wing, and we have a primary care facility. During COVID, we helped provide services with the city. We were one of their testing sites that we were able to help have access to. So currently, as most of our population is here in our county, we have about seventy percent Caucasian patients, while we have about twenty-four percent of our patients are of black, of Native or African American, and about ninety percent are Hispanic. We currently have about nine hundred patients that are pediatric patients. Of those, we were able to capture some of those from COVID- nineteen. As we all know, we have limited pediatric resources for our patients that are either uninsured or are on certain Medicaid programs, where we actually help, and we accept all Medicaid products. Also, for this time, I'm sorry. Are the slides timed?
No.
Oh, okay, good, good, thank you, I'm so sorry. And so currently, we have about forty-four percent of our patients are insured. So we accept insurance, so we take Medicare, Medicaid. We also take all third-party insurances, including TriCare. But forty-six percent of our patients don't have insurance access. So of those, one hundred and three of them are under the age of eighteen. So what we do is we have a slide and key schedule. It is based upon your household size, how many people live in your household, how much income do you have to support that house? And then we'll put you on a sliding discount program. We also have about two hundred patients, I'm sorry, just over three hundred patients that are living in public housing. So we're resourced there as well. We have about one hundred and fifty patients that are veterans, and as of right now, we have had hundred patients that are planning to be homeless or unhoused. So what are some of the issues that we see actively within our facility? We have quite a few patients that you can see that have a diagnosis of hypertension. Also, our mental health issues in our community are very first. We have a lot of patients who experience depression, other mental health diseases, which will be inclusive of bipolar, schizophrenia, paranoia, and aspects like that, followed by PTSD and anxiety. We also have a large, some of patients who are experiencing substance use disorder, which we know is an issue in all of our communities, not just ours. But on our primary side, it's hypertension, diabetes. We even have an influx of hepatitis C within our community. And those are all treatable at our health center. We also have assistance for restrictions. We have systems set up where our case manager will meet with our patient one-on-one. We submit documentation to that pharmaceutical company to get twelve months' worth of medication for free submitted to the patient's home. Otherwise, we have programs with pharmacies through a program called three forty B. It's a federally backed program. Whereas as a health center, we're able to make connections with pharmacies and pharmaceutical companies that we are able to access additional dollars that are put back into our healthcare system to help our patients who are uninsured. And so we have a pharmacy on site at our Beaumont location that transports meds to our office daily. So our patients, if you have insurance, have to see where it's located. If you are uninsured, do not give a coke. Our health center covers the cost. We also offer transportation services. If y'all have ever seen the tan van driving around town, we have a total of four tan vans. They go to Mark that service, the Orange office, service to Beaumont office, with a rural health center that they service, and then we have an extra for backup. That is no cost to our patients. It is a covered expense of the healthcare center. If you have insurance such as Medicaid, Medicaid does offer services. Remove your insurance for transportation if a patient does not have transportation. But if transportation is still a barrier for a patient with or without insurance, all they have to do is let them know that we will be happy to help secure with that patient. Also, we have programs where our case managers meet with our patients who don't have insurance to help them apply for insurance. So that's the last aspect of the insurance assistance, we will help you apply for insurance. So during Medicare enrollment, we have a large influx of patients, and it's just going through that process and helping them get it, get connected to services. So again, what services do we provide? We have integrated care. And I don't know if everyone knows what integrated care is, but it is where we offer in our primary care setting, behavioral health services. So those patients with depression, anxiety, we take care of that in your primary care visit. Plus, we have behavioral health right there. So if we have a patient that needed an emergency access point, they're right there to get their care right in there. You don't need to come back, you don't need to go somewhere, you can take care of it right there. Also, we have limits help. We have case management, of course, we have referral resources. We also have programs for our patients that are struggling with diabetes, with hypertension. We have a nurse on site that will work you through that program, help you get educated. We need to choose which you need, whether it is a blood pressure monitor that you can take home to monitor, or if a patient has a resource barrier where they need help getting their glucometer, so that they can take control of those co-comorities, and so that they can live a healthier, longer life. Again, we have access to pharmaceuticals. We work with collaborations with several community partners, food banks, health fairs. We were at the back to school Orange County last weekend. And so all those resources, we are always in partnerships. And also, we were talking about just a moment ago, the diabetes education, hypertension, but also we have the laboratory services on site. We have a program with lab form, where they are on at each healthcare center. They, if you're uninsured, it's covered as part of your sliding key code. Again, pharmaceuticals, we have the Vida Pharmacy, they are powered at our Beaumont location, but we also have other three forty B access pharmacies, including Walgreens right here in Orange. So what are some of these unmet needs? We're having limited access to some specialists. We know that's a problem here in our town, in our community, but I know with the new hospital, it's really gonna make a lot of difference for our patients who really need specialized healthcare. Also, whenever they do need specialized care, we have issues with cost barriers for our uninsured patients. It still may be cost prohibitive, also for your uninsured patients. And so that is a little bit of an issue that we have. We have other transportation assistance here, of course, with mills on wheels. But whereas Uber Health, we don't have any Uber Health transportation drivers here in town. So that can be an area for our patients. And of course, there is a federal attack on three forty B. We're working with our other partners to see how can we continue to raise the knowledge of it and bring it to the forefront. Plus, the state of Texas, of course, had the Medicaid disembolment that happened as well. About half a million Texas residents were removed from Medicaid services just this month. And of course, we need additional access points. And as our mayor said, this month, or this week, is our National Health Center Week, and we are on a roadmap to make a stronger America for our healthier communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And I appreciate all this, all the, without us having to, you know, it's supposed to open soon. You guys have been there to help us many, many times over, so we just say thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all for your support. Thank you.
All right. On to item seven, the second agenda, July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes. July eighteenth, special call, city council meeting minutes. And July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I will say aye as well. Motion passes. Item eight, first reading. Considering ordinance by the City of Orange, Texas authorizing the settlement of the proposed fuel reconciliation of energy Texas, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act, making other findings and provisions related to the subject and declaring ineffective day. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor, council, good morning. Once again, a long, long prayer has represented us and several other entities in regards to some energy considerations. And they've gotten with those other folks, and they reconciled approximately one point six seven billion of fuel and purchased power expenses that occurred for a two or three-year period, and they came up with a, recommended a settlement. So again, as typically do, we follow their recommendations.
Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Coombs? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Coombs. Item nine, eight, considering a resolution approving EDC funding for the Westside Waterline Phase Two from Tulane Road to FM one oh five, in an amount not to exceed five hundred and seventy thousand. First reading was July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Tranh?
Yes, so mayor and council, there are three approval action steps that must be taken when considering the EDC incentive. The EDC board approves a motion, which then moves to the city council to approve a first reading and a final reading. This is the final step in terms of the approval process for this EDC incentive. I'll turn back over.
Definitely a very big project for us, and very excited about it. To help us bring along some more potential development in that area, so. Any questions or comments for Mr. Tranh? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And myself, I say aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Tranh. All right, item nine, B, considering a resolution of the City of Orange, Texas authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Old Orange Cafe for disaster-related catering services for city employees and approved support personnel. Mr. Smith?
Good morning, mayor and council. On September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, the city entered into a contract with Old Orange Cafe for the disaster food catering services should the need arise. The contract was for a one-year contract, which allowed for two one-year extensions. Last year, we extended the contract for the first extension that will expire on September twenty-first of two thousand twenty-three. It's my recommendation that the city exercise the second renewal option for the disaster food catering services to the Old Orange Cafe for the next year.
A question I have, so after we visit the second extension that's about, what will we have to do to then start negotiations and?
You have to go up for our reviews.
Okay, so you say send out people to see who all will get the best bid for it and things like that?
That's it.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much.
What we got to do next? There you go. Hopefully, we don't have to use them. All right, item nine, C, considering a resolution for the reduced speed limit of fifty-five miles per hour on the Portionus State Highway eighty-seven for a distance of one point seven four four miles from mile point one point five zero two, just south of FM one oh five to mile point three point two four six, FM ten oh six. This resolution request is made on behalf of the Texas Department of Transportation for the safety of the public and construction workers of the rehabilitation of the existing roadway in this vicinity. This rehabilitation project is in support of the construction of the Golden Triangle Polymers Project. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor, council, again, as part of the process to allow Texas to reduce the speed in South eighty-seven, which is from one oh five of the DPO station is down to the chemical road. We have passed a resolution to support Golden Triangle. And again, once all that's done.
It'll go back. I think it was, I think it's just sixty-five right there anyway, so we're just dropping it to ten.
Right.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Mr. Coombs? Okay, if not, we have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Coombs. On to item ten, A, consider a resolution. Considering motion acknowledging receipt of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four proposed budget for the City of Orange. Ms. Zito?
Yes, good morning. So the staff has been working hard to prepare our proposed budget. Y'all have this, for y'all now. This motion is just to acknowledge receipt. We'll discuss and review it at our budget workshop.
And so like, how many more of these do we have, credit? We have several more right now.
I have a couple more that I can.
Okay, just wondering in case when we have the open discussion, people who are here may wanna look at it, or I guess we can put it on the screen as well, too. All right.
Mayor, if I can, you know, if you're canceling again, we have some council motion right here today. If y'all have questions coming down by next week, certainly ask those. Give me a call, stop by and let me know.
Okay, so this motion is to acknowledge receipt of the budget. Do I have a motion? I have a motion. Second. Motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Item ten, B, considering a motion acknowledging receipt of the two thousand and twenty-three certified appraisal values and the corresponding reports from the Orange County Appraisal District. Ms. Zito?
So this is to acknowledge receipt of these values. You'll see the values of summary page on page forty-nine of the package. Just to give you the highlights, total taxable values of property in the city went up eleven point five four percent from last year. It's at one million, a little over a million, a billion four.
You said forty-nine or forty-five?
I think forty-nine.
Okay.
Market value went up twelve percent. Let's see, at the bottom of that chart, you'll see the average taxable homestead value. Last year it was one fifteen. It went up sixteen, almost seventeen thousand, fourteen percent, to now the average taxable homestead is a hundred and thirty-two thousand. But this is just acknowledging receipt of these values which come from the county district. This is, this is not nothing we calculate.
Can I come over here real quick? One second.
No, no, no.
It's, I, I went. Oh, weird, my bad, I was like, because we were looking at page forty-nine, I was like, no, you don't know this. My bad, okay. Well, it's hard to scroll down to page forty-nine on this, but we'll look at it, thank you. Because I was like, man, I know I'm dumb. This is.
And that's what I'm saying.
That's why I just was right. No, no, we were looking at page forty-nine, but it's in, well, it is.
That's what I'm saying. Y'all can't even write this. Please call or stop.
Got you.
If you look at it, you look like this, and just, do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's like, what's my number?
Yeah, no, I'll scroll down and look at it, it just takes us a while to scroll. My bad.
I don't know, sure, why not?
He knew it was, my bad, bro, that's that wisdom. Okay, so any questions for Ms. Zito? We have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Okay, item ten, C, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the certification of the two thousand and twenty-three anticipated collection rate and two thousand twenty-two excess debt collection. Ms. Zito?
So we're just acknowledging receipt of this, and this comes upon the tax assessor collector. She estimates what this collector rate is. She estimated to be eighty-one point thirty-two. Last year it was one eleven point seventy-two. This is a calculation that she does, we accept it, we have to acknowledge it, but it's part of our present calculation. So she does this proportion, this is just acknowledged.
All right, do we have any questions or comments from Ms. Zito?
No.
Okay, if not, do I have a motion?
Okay.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Okay. Item ten, C, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the statement of two thousand twenty-three tax rates and the corresponding worksheets from the Orange County Tax Assessor Collection. Ms. Zito?
So this is also just acknowledging receipt, these tax rates are calculated by the tax assessor collector. I did review them, I do concur, I calculated. Our no new revenue rate, which is on page sixty-six in your package.
Thank you.
It's the rate that they calculate to create the same amount of revenues left. So if the city could operate on the same exact revenues last year, that would be the rate. The voter approval rate is a rate that cap at three and a half percent. The most you can adopt without one vote election. So there's that rate. Both of those have gone up here. So I told y'all in the past, but we go over every year because it's a hard concept. Anytime values go up, which I just told you the values of property went up, then our rates come down. So our rates are decreased. And lastly, our debt rate, now this one did increase because, last year it was decreased, and so they're leveling out our net rate. It's point oh eight eight two six one, but that is the rate that tells them how much money goes to pay our loans. That's, and then the difference, what's left is goes to pay our bills, maintenance operations. So this motion is to accept these from the tax assessor collector.
Okay, any extra questions from Ms. Zito? Okay. Any extra questions from Ms. Zito? Thank you for putting this together, 'cause I know a lot of times we can't get everything done until we receive those numbers.
I see that correct.
Thank you so much for all the extra work in your entire department. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Do we have a motion, Ms. Trainee? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you, Ms. Zito. On to item ten E, discussion and possible action on the tax rate. If proposed tax rate will exceed the no new revenue tax rate, take record vote and schedule a public hearing. The notice of public hearing on tax increase for the City of Orange, Texas will be published and posted per the requirements of the Texas Government Code one four zero point zero one zero. Mr. Coombs?
Uh, Mayor, Council, again, the tax rate that we're proposing in this proposed budget is point seven five nine five, seven five nine five, four hundred dollars. That is lower than the current tax rate, which is point seven eight three. Again, we're on set the tax rate today, which is the highest it can go this, uh, budget season, if you will. We will set the tax rate on August the twenty-ninth.
So for the public to hear that again, in case, so what we're setting today is we're setting the tax rate for as high as it can go without him having to go to a public vote. So whatever we do next here in a second, that is not the final tax number. This is the highest we can go without having to go to a vote from the citizens. Mr. Good, you got something, Mr. Wilson?
That, that's correct. We'll be, uh, depending on the vote, Council, there will be public notification of the hearing that will be set on the tax rate. But if you vote for Mr. Good's recommendation, there is not an election to contest.
Thank you, sir. So one more thing before I, uh, I go to see about a motion is I want the, the public to understand something else. So right now, the tax rate is at point seven eight three. Okay, so it's point seven eight three. This new proposed highest rate that we can go is point seven five nine five, which means that the tax rate number is dropping. However, that is able to happen because of the, the appraisal on your homes that came from not us, but from the county. So because now your houses are more valuable, it does not take as much time or percentage to get what we need to operate as a city. So even though the no new tax rate, the no new revenue is point seven zero three three three, if we were to go to the no new revenue, that means that we would not get a single dollar more than what we gained last year. Okay? However, just like your house went up, so did everything else, the price of gas, the price of being able to repair things, being able to mow the parks, being able to keep us up and running twenty-four hours a day, police, fire, parks, streets and drainage, water and sewer finance departments, water department, all those things that we have, those things have had an adjusted rate that need us to at least look at the point seven five nine five, which, so when we say this, it's gonna say that we're raising your tax. We're not, we're not raising it, we're lowering it, but we are raising it from what it could be if we did not need a single extra dollar. Okay? I know that's kinda confusing, but just wanted to break that down. So that's where we are. Today, we're not setting the rate, we're setting the cap. So do I have a motion to set the cap?
And there's somebody at cap, somebody at.
If we have a motion to set that cap, I will hand that person this. Whoever wants to make the motion. You'll make it, okay?
I'm looking at the property tax rate being increased by the document of the tax rate of zero point seven five nine five zero per one hundred dollars, which is effectively a seven point nine nine percent increase. And the tax rate is scheduling a public hearing on Tuesday, August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three at five thirty PM.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Motion.
Do we have a second? You have a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And myself, I say aye as well. Now, the actual rate will be decided after we have all of our discussions and forums. This is just to let us know where we can go without having to have a vote. All right, thank you, Mr. Coombs. And motion passes. And on to city manager report, Mr. Coombs?
Again, just a reminder about the, uh, budget workshop that will be next Tuesday, August fifteenth, five thirty, here in the council chamber.
All right, all right, city council report, starting with Mr. Burge? Number four. Number four, Ms. Salter?
Uh, Julie, boy.
Okay, well, this one, oh, yeah, come here.
I'm sorry. Uh, I just wanna thank everybody for, for coming out and, uh, and, and just wanna say, you know, thank you to Tan for their great job and the things that they are doing, uh, for the people here in our area. We are so blessed to have Tan here, seeing about people that are really undeserved and, uh, uninsured. Thank you.
Uh, what question? Uh, the bar hall was, um, can I have an update when that's gonna be quiet? I have a lot of neighbors asking me that, so if you can get with me this week, maybe. That's all I have.
Okay, once again, I wanna say thank you to everyone for coming. Thank you to Tan for being here, wonderful presentation.
Yes, great job.
As I've said before and I'll say it again, I'm forever embedded to Tan, um, when I first met Ms. Dina, 'cause they kicked me out of meeting Trump. And Ms. Dina was like, let me check and make sure you got COVID. And so we drove to Beaumont and she tickled my brain and thought I wouldn't go make it. But, uh, that was my first time ever doing that. I about fell out in the car. But ever since then, you, you guys have always been here for this community. And it was, um, when you talked about the demographics and the number of people that you see, it's pretty much relevant to the makeup of the City of Orange. Um, so the City of Orange, uh, the Caucasian Anglo-Saxon is about sixty-six percent. African American is about thirty-two, thirty-one percent, and then the Spanish and others. So to see those numbers, it was, it's pretty much congruent with what we have. So thank you for what you do. Continue to be a blessing. And, uh, with that being said, I appreciate you all. And let's go to, oh, man, there's no executive session. That's nice. All right. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
That's been a long time. Only favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion meeting adjourned. See y'all next time. Dang, we only gotta sit here for another hour.